Good evening, everybody. Let this start off with a salutation, please. If you're online, please give me a moment. Yourself? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Auburn.
Here.
Commissioner Lutz.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Here.
Commissioner Marchand.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor. Present. Deputy Director Romero.
Here.
Director Soleo.
Here.
Ordinance 2024-4. Do I have a motion and second that the ordinance be read on first reading by title only?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2024-4 amending and supplementing ordinance 2023-2 authorizing continuation of the New Jersey County Option Hospital Fee Program for the County of Cumberland.
Big motion.
Second.
Go ahead. First. Second. Roll call. Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
The ordinance, the summary terms of which are included herein, was introduced and passed upon first reading at a meeting of the governing body of the County of Cumberland, State of New Jersey on May 14, 2024. It will be considered for final passage after public hearing thereon at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to be held at the County Administration Building, 164 West Broad Street, Bridgeton, New Jersey 08302. On June 11, 2024, at 6:00 PM prevailing time, at which time and place, comments and objections to the ordinance 2024-4 may be presented by members of the public. During the week prior to and up to including the date of such meeting, copies of the full ordinance will be available at no cost during regular business hours at the Clerk of the Board's office at 164 West Broad Street, Bridgeton, Jersey, for the members of the general public who shall request the same. Public comment on resolutions only.
Motion to open public comment.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody? Resolutions only, public comment? Five minutes. Don't take your.
Motion to close? Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We're going to start with the exception. Resolutions 2024-294, Resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of a grant agreement for the state fiscal year 2024, alternative responses to reduce instances of violence and escalation to Together Grant Program. Resolution 2024, we're going to vote on these. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Auburn.
Just a question that is the prosecutor here right now or online?
Doctor? Doctor Peter McCray Webb, are you there?
Just one real quick comment is that this system is designed to that it's a team effort. And just the recent incident in Billville that it was questioned that the police, this happened at their city hall, the police arrived and it was a person that had some mental issues. I don't know the whole incident, but it just, the arrived team arrived late after the incident was basically done. And it's a question that if the system was to work the way it's described, that it's a team effort. And I just making a comment that if this is for future, if we go to more incidents like this, I have issues with that. If we're going to push this, and I do appreciate it, they're trading rooms, at least speaking at their trading rooms, that it's a good program, but.
Is the question about arrival or is it about the program itself?
Well, if it's a late arrival, then it has a question about the program.
I just wanted to make sure it's clarified.
The person's come from the same place the officers were coming from, the same building. So it's, if you're going to be there for mental help, then they got to be there for mental help to help the officers deal with it. So that's all, just kind of telling you.
We do have a prosecutor in the other room now. Mr. Shapiro.
Our prosecutor's going to be as well.
She's shady, by the way?
Well, it's, I already made a comment, it's all.
You don't want to answer.
Well, did you hear that, Mr. Shapiro?
No, no.
Just, I just wanted to point out that if this program is designed, that it's a teamwork, it's a mental health, police working together. When there's an issue, there was an issue just recently at the City Hall in Billville, I guess, I don't know the whole circumstances, but it was a mental health issue with the person, police rushed there. It was made the comment that the arrive, the people, the counselors or whatever, was to work with the police officers arrived after the incident was done, even though they came from the same building. So there's a time they have to earn their pay, that was a time to earn their pay. And I'll relay it to you that it should be stressed in these things that it's a team, not, okay, you get what I'm saying, so.
I hear another second.
To the board, I've also said it too, that in the future, you know, so thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-295, Resolution approving budget amendment fiscal year 2024, alternative responses to reduce instances of violence and escalation Together Grant Program, $150,000. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-296, Resolution authorizing the submission of a project proposal to the New Jersey Transit for NJ JRC's grant program. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Question on it? One minute. John, does this have anything to do with cats?
You could impact cats, therefore, I believe you're going to say that you're probably abstaining.
Okay, thank you. That's your next question?
I have a quick question. So I think we discussed this a little bit, Mr. Ridgway or John. I think there's a, if we get this, there's a matching aspect to this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the county, if we do get this grant, we would have to match what's being given in the grant.
I think it's around $26,000, my guess.
Yeah. I agree with you. Clark, just make sure. Thank you.
Well, I have a question. Does this expand our transportation at all? Does it expand the system at all? I see all the variables here. Community access, jobs, education, all the areas, does it expand the system at all?
Jamie Gomez is on the line. She can address it better than I could.
Okay.
Ms. Gomez, you go, man.
I am.
Okay, can you speak to this, please?
I can. These are funds that are used to support the existing operations, it's not for expansion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Well, Director, let's just make comment off of that, that it's great, we continue to do what we're doing, that we have a good system, it works, but it's not good enough. It would be maybe behooves to look at other areas to increase our system. We have an area that are, we have people that do not have vehicles, we have areas that are rural.
Actually, in the last meeting, we are investigating, especially transportation on the west side of the county, to extend a fund that you just, I really appreciate.
Director, if I may, right now, they just got done having a Rutgers study. Okay. And they're going through what a fine tooth come, and they want to implement a number of these different things. So at this point in time, we really can't talk about it.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fine, but the point is that we are, that we should be addressing it. You tell me we are starting to address it. Also, Commissioner Sorrow said that, so, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Epstein.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-297, Resolution declaring May 2024 as Old Americans' Month in Cumberland County. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion. Second.
Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Absolutely, I'm 65 this year.
You're a state. So you've stayed.
That's right, I'm staying, that's right. Yes.
Resolution 2024-298, Resolution authorizing execution of a lease extension agreement on behalf of the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office for 14 to 16 Commerce Street, Bridgeton. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second. Commissioner Auburn.
I have a question on this. How far along is our, have we looked at Wood Street at all at any, we're going to pay this lease for five years with built-in increases. Do we have any update on the Wood School or consolidation that we're speaking about?
Sure. So I, we did get our consultant's review act, and I submitted it to the board. So if it was the board's wish to move on it, we would look to try to get some AA bid to put the thing together, but it's not going to happen in the term that that lease.
I agree, but it's five years. That's a five-year lease, right? If I saw, it's not a five-year.
It's the one-year extension.
Speaking of Oscars, please.
Yes.
This 4060 doesn't have five years built into it. I saw five years of numbers increases every year.
I need to go back and look at the lease, but.
It's a one-year extension.
Yeah.
Go right to it.
Okay. I'll be here within a couple of minutes.
So if this, this is one year that, even if we, so what's planned for the year after? Are we going to, I thought I saw five years of dollars.
It increases over, a little over $100 amount each year.
You said it's only one year.
Right, yes. Hold on, I think it's one year. 198. This ends May 14, 2024. So one-year extension, one year.
All right, so.
For the original leases in this. We're probably going to extend it for one year, is that correct? That's accurate, there you go.
Okay, so, all right, so what's the schedule behind here? What is the schedule?
You have the right to extend the lease from your chair to follow the ring.
Okay, so we could only, so, all right, so we have time to plan. Yes. All right, I'll, yes, then.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-299, Resolution authorizing settlement in a matter of a discipline appeal filed by Higginson Lopez, State of New Jersey, Office of Administrative Law, RDL, docket number CSV08010-2022S, and Civil Service Appeal 2024-745. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes, and I just want to say that this is another settlement that we have worked through. The county has done a good, good job, along with the new attorneys that we brought on. And again, we are solving these matters very quickly and coming to an end. This is something that will help the county over a long period of time, so, thank you.
Resolution 2024-300, Resolution authorizing a license agreement between Cumberland County and Verizon, New Jersey Incorporated for placement and maintenance of aerial and underground cables and equipment in Verizon right-of-way. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second. Commissioner Auburn.
This is a comment, I thank this committee, these two, that's two we're going to do, it's a step in the right, for the middle mile, it's one of the steps that have to be taken, so, yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes, and I'd like to point out that this resolution and the following, there's no cost to the county to continue what we're doing at this point in time. And I want to repeat, there's no cost to the county at this point in time.
Resolution 2024-301, Resolution authorizing infrastructure license agreement between Cumberland County Atlantic City Electric Company for placement and maintenance of aerial and underground cables and equipment in Atlantic City Electric Company's right-of-way. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-302, Resolution authorizing application and grant agreement with the South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization for a subregional transportation planning grant. Do I have a motion and second?
We'll make the motion.
Second. Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Epstein.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-303, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for by $66,000 early voting postcards for the Cumberland County Board of Elections. Do I have a motion and second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I just forgot.
Question.
We're not happy about it.
Question before we do anything else. Can I make a question before a second, or no? Does the second have to be?
Second, and then it'd be comments.
Yes, I would second.
A second.
Okay. Just to get comments.
Okay.
Nay. Voice anything?
Okay.
This is a primary, correct? It's not us against them, it's them against them, us against them, whatever you want to call it. Okay, am I correct?
Ooh.
All right. I don't see a postcard changing anything and spending, the first question I had is, is this mandatory?
So to my knowledge, and I think I saw Lizbeth here, we actually had a conversation about this, and this was voted on by your Board of Elections? No, it's not mine, just see, the county Board of Elections, right? In order to try to deal with lines, is that a fair representation of Lizbeth? Thank you.
Okay, so it's not mandatory, the question is, is it mandatory?
And the answer was no, it was voted on by the.
Okay. So if this is not mandatory, and we just got done passing no increase on our taxes, right? The next question is, do we have this kind of money in there, or is it grant money? Is it grant money?
That's, yeah, I'm.
Well, I think, Mr. Ridgway and I had a conversation.
Yes, it is grant money.
Yep.
It's reimbursed by the early voting grant.
Okay. I had a conversation with Mr. Ridgway about this earlier today. He informed me at that time that it is grant money. Only problem, I guess I would say, is we're paying for it now, and I guess we'll get the grant money when we get it. Correct. So we get refund. Yes. Correct.
I'll relate to a comment about it, the biggest thing here is that it's going to be a, I believe, real pretty, is that a local, is that a local printer, or is that a, that's the one of New York, this one?
This is our contractor that does the ballot printing.
That would be nice, that something like this could be printed, because it's not, it's not the major, it's just a, oh, you've already postcard, would be, it'd be, it'd be nice to see that printed locally, not set out to where major.
I think the vast majority of the cost is postage, I believe that's $13,000.
Well, that's why I wanted to speak to Mr. Randy Ananas, is that, right now, with the $21,000, okay, when the general election comes into play, what types of monies are available to you then, as far as grant money?
Same amount.
The same amount?
Mm-hmm.
The same amount of people that the postcards go to?
Most likely the same amount.
What was the justification of sending an additional postcard as opposed to a mailer just for the practice ballots or sample ballots?
So we send out sample ballots, and we have the actual early voting locations printed on there, but early voting starts before the ballots have the mandatory to be mailed out. So early voting starts at, this year, and it lasts for five days.
So this is the precursor to the sample ballot?
Yes, exactly, exactly. Is it a later, just promote early voting for this, I believe.
Okay.
It's something that it's intended to do also for the general election, so that we produce the law in sample voting locations.
Are we obligated in the future years?
Are we obligated or not?
Okay.
No.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Epstein.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero. Director Soleo.
I'm a guest for now, until we see how this works out. I understand for this year, because of such confusion during the elections at this point in time, but I'd like to take a hard look at this, maybe, if you can, please, in the future. So we know, if we're going to spend grant money on something like that, maybe we can do it in other places, just, that works better for you.
The grant money also includes for publications and for any advertising that has to do with early voting specifically.
So it's just early voting?
So it's just early voting, that's the only reason why we can get the grant money for this.
Okay, all right, great, I'm a guest.
Resolution 2024-304, Resolution authorizing payment of bills. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Auburn.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
ID number 14954, Resolution awarding a contract for providing in-school youth industry-focused training internship program services for Kmart County. Kmart County. ID number 14955, Resolution awarding a contract for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused occupational training internship program services for Salem County and Kmart County by means of the Cumberland Salem-Kmart workforce development and authorizing re-advertising requests for additional proposals. 15007, Resolution accepting grant award for the NJSL Capital Projects Fund Community Center Digital Connect in the amount of $3 million.
Excuse me, are we allowed to ask questions as we go along?
Can.
Well, no, just let me have.
Let me see something. Maybe I can figure it out. Well, let's, you want to do, let's move in between.
Do you want to do?
I'd rather do it that way.
Not nobody, you're a problem.
Wait, 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 when we're asking questions, do what it's asked, right? That, at the end, when we have.
That's what he said.
No, no, we can ask the questions.
That's fine, that's okay.
All right, just make a note.
So I'm going to do it. No problem.
Thank you.
15050, Resolution awarding a contract for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused training and an internship program services in Cumberland County by means of the Cumberland Salem-Kmart Workforce Development Board, RFP number 24-13, and by all, and authorizing re-advertising requests for additional proposals. 15120, Resolution granting approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services for SFY 25 jail medication assisted treatment reentry initiative. 15132, Resolution authorizing renewal of the annual plan for the Cumberland County Alliance to prevent alcoholism and drug abuse for fiscal year 2025. 15133, Resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and to execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, LIWA, administration grant. 15134, Resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and to execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Universal Service Fund Administration Grant. 15135, Resolution approving budget amendment LIWA administration grant, $8,086. 15136, Resolution approving budget amendment Universal Service Fund, CWA administration grant, $5,391. 15137, Resolution authorizing grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Military and Veterans Affairs for transportation services for veterans. 15138, Resolution approving budget amendment fiscal year 2025, Veterans Transportation System, $15,000. 15140, Resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for Inmate Resident Telephone Control Service for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections in accordance with State Contract Number 1NJCP-88935. 15141, Resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing grant writing and related consultant services for the County of Cumberland, RFP 23-07, resubmission. 15142, Resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for Network Preventative Maintenance Level 1, ASTRO Support On-Site Infrastructure Response Standard, ASTRO Dispatch Service for the Emergency Number 1 Communications Center. 15143, Resolution authorizing purchase of emergency mitigation services, HEPA, and WHEC under ESCNJ. Finish it.
Next week, she asked you to finish it.
Could you just finish that, and join me?
Resolution authorizing purchase of emergency mitigation services in HEPA, AVAC, and WHEC under ESCNJ 22/23-23 for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections.
15145, Enabling Resolution authorizing to filing a suspending plan for 2023 Recycling Enhancement Act tax fund entitlement pursuant to public law 2027 C.311 at set here and after the Act. 15146, Resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for by ArcGIS Software Maintenance Annual Renewal for the Planning Department for the period of July 1st, 24 through June 30 of 2025, ASPO 40A colon 7-5, 1DD proprietary software. 15149, Resolution of the County of Cumberland, New Jersey Determining the Form and Other Details of Its Note Relating to the Construction Financing Program of the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure I-Bank to be issued in the principal amount of up to $33,674,200 and for providing issuance and sale of such note to the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure I-Bank and authorizing the sale and authorizing execution and delivery of such note by the County of Cumberland in favor of the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure I-Bank all pursuant to the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure I-Bank Construction Financing Program. 15150, Resolution authorizing shared service agreement with the City of Bridgeton for the Kansas River. 15153, Resolution approving budget amendment fiscal year 2024 Local Free Impact Fund, $1,500,000. 15154, Resolution approving budget amendment Money Island Access Concept Development Project, $150,000. 15156, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing voting machine programming testing and support services for primary 2024 election. 15157, resolution accepting grant award from the New Jersey Office of National Drug Control Policy passed through the Pennsylvania Office of the Attorney General for the 2024 Liberty Mid-Atlantic Hita High Density Drug Traffic Grant. 15158, resolution approving budget amendment 2024 High Density Drug Traffic Area Liberty Mid-Atlantic Grant, $80,000. 15159, resolution authorizing amendment to the shared service agreement between the Cumberland County, Salem County, Gloucester County, and the Cumberland County Improvement Authority concerning design work related to the regional jail facility site. 15160, resolution canceling expired contracts for May 2024 material, services, and supplies. Resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. That was 15161. 15163, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for renewal of monthly elevator inspection maintenance with testing. 15164, resolution authorizing participation of a grant county, participation of Cumberland County as a designated negotiating entity in the state development and redevelopment plan cross-acceptance process. 15167, resolution authorizing approval to submit an application for the OJJDP fiscal year 24 Enhancing School Capacities Address Youth Violence Grant. 15168, resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application for the BJA fiscal year 24 Stop School Violence Program. 15172, resolution authorizing execution of memorandum of understanding between Cumberland County Department of Corrections and the Social Security Administration. 15165, resolution authorizing shared service agreement between Cumberland County and the Cumberland County Board of Health for Division of COVID-19 Health Education, Social Support, Coordination, and Information and Health Screenings and Preventative Care Education. 15173, resolution amending Resolution 2024-6 Designating Regular Monthly Meetings. Resolution 15174, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in litigation matter Brown Clark et al. versus Charles Warren, U.S. District Court, Docket Number 1:20-CV-7907. 15175, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 5:30-5.5, a workers' compensation matter of Barbara Eckert versus the County of Cumberland. 15177, resolution authorizing inter-county agreement for the regional rehabilitation and reentry center of Salem and Gloucester, Cumberland. Do you want to ask questions now or just go into the other resolutions?
Well, let's, let's...
Yeah. There's only four.
There's only one more. Okay, let's just finish a little.
These ones are still pending.
Yep.
15109, resolution awarding a contract for various youth services for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory, RFP number 24-10, that's pending. 15128, resolution awarding contract for specifications for the replacement of structure 06VO-058 East Chestnut Avenue over Panther Branch, City of Island, County of Cumberland, New Jersey, bid number 24-17, pending. 15155, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for equipment back truck repair, information pending. 15162, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for seven-foot ornamental steel fence.
I don't want to make any statements. Let's start with, who do you want, Marchand? Just state the resolution number and then we can...
15143, just get a little bit more clarity on that. Is that an emergency situation or...
No, it's not. It's actually, right now with the HVAC system, is, Chuck is not here. I can speak.
He's right in front of me.
He'll bite me if he knows. Speak to the issue, please.
Chuck Abinow, Director for the Department of Corrections. That's really a surface mold remediation effort. We had some areas due to poor ventilation that we're addressing separately. So that's where we already have funding to address that, but we found some mold issues. Nothing's airborne, but we need to get it. So this is the surface cleaning for that. So we had it tested by Ram Environmental, and this is what they recommended needed to be done. So it's really something that we really can't opt out of.
It's not an emergency situation.
It's urgent because it was not, yeah, exactly, because it needs to be addressed, so...
Is this a company we're hired or is this equipment we're purchasing?
No, it's a company that we've hired.
And is this just, after this is done, it's done, right? It's a one-time?
As long as we get the ventilation resolved and, you know, we don't end up in this situation. Again, my understanding, it's not the first time the jail has wound up in this situation. So that's why.
Well, that's why they put in for the repairs and so, and the fixes. And the last thing you need to be caught, this is where the issue from old system. So the ventilation system is a big issue. That's why you're looking to repair all the vents and all the HVAC, even the windows, everything's, you know, a mold issue at this point in time.
Yeah, so we had already worked with finance with Jeff, and we've already identified funds to address the ventilation issue. So we're not revisiting this next year.
So thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're just taking a really proactive stance on maintenance and scale. Trying to handle things before they become an issue when you're there instead of... Amen. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Director, that's the only issue I have.
Okay.
Okay, so Resolution 15150, shared services with the City of Bridgeton for the Kehan Zoo. We give $30,000. I'm wondering if we can't put in our budget next year to up that to 50. I think, you know, as a county, the whole county utilized that zoo, and it's a gem, and we need to do what we can to...
Okay. Didn't we bump up that stipend? Or is it the same number?
The same.
I'm remembering this. Okay, it's the same number.
Last one this year.
How long have we been giving them the 30,000?
As long as you hear me. As long as you hear me.
We'll take that into consideration. Has that been since 2002? Okay. All right, so let me take that.
Is there any specification of how that money can be spent? Is there any, anything we put, any strings on that money at all?
Just that it gets earmarked for the benefit of the zoo.
Just the zoo in general, though, though it's more, is it hiring, it's...
Nothing too much specific, no.
Just, just so you know, the City of Bridgeton passed a open space, they've actually collected extra money they have never done. Actually, I was leaning towards maybe even looking not to this because it's for Bridgeton. The, what, I was way into 50,000 or zero, but it's, yeah, it should be looked at. As long as, I think it should be, kind of make sure we know where it's going. That's all I ask. And along with their own commitment, which it just did, this open space money could make the zoo something special or the law run. Has plenty of space to expand, so I agree with you.
Let's look at the appropriations.
Yeah, this is something we discussed last year.
You've discussed it.
And we wanted to know more where this money's going.
Yeah.
Just here's 30,000. We want to know a little bit about where is it being spent, you know, in the zoo. And we haven't seen anything come back and say, hey, this is the way we spend it. So it looks like it's been, they've been happy with 30,000 up to now because we don't see the needs where this money's being spent. So I recommend that, you know, we get some type of report back that where we spending this money is in food, is in promotion, where is it going? You know, I don't see a problem going up to 50. But as a, as a commissioner for it, get a report once a, at least once a year where it went.
Our request is for what was spent for 2023, and then we will get regular reports for 2024.
Sure.
I have a new report with the Bridgeton CFO, so what do you do?
Good, perfect.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anything else you want to...
That was it.
Commissioner Omero?
I don't have anything right now.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Most of my stuff is definitions or acronyms. Just, I'd just like to know what I'm voting on. It's one of those things. NJSL, is that the New Jersey State Library, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now we go into the LIHEAP, okay, CWI, no, it's, but help me out with that one.
Which?
There's a couple.
Which? Well, we're going to get to...
This resolution, there you go.
This is Resolution 15133, okay? And it's a grant, I mean, it's not, it's a grant application, but I'd just like to know what that stands for.
Yeah, I used to have it memorized. I know it's low income, but it goes...
Going from heating assistance program.
Yeah.
There you go.
So it's two-year dollar string.
Okay, give her a nipple. All right, excellent. Let's see. The Department of Community Affairs, Universal Service Fund. Anybody, what is a universal service fund?
So that and the LIWC grant are both go towards social services, and so the CWA is for the county welfare agency. So they help offset the administration of any SNAP programs.
Okay, I'm glad you said that because I thought it was a union.
Does it have a nickel in this one, too?
Yeah, there you go.
Keep going.
Hold on, one more. Okay, Local Freight Impact Fund. I know it has nothing to do with a train, or what do you call it?
Round.
Tracker trailer. Just help me out.
Does any, yeah, transportation roadway projects?
God, it's looking at.
15, it's a federal.
We are rolling today, man. Okay. That's it. They were just definitions.
I'm sorry, show.
Back over the level line.
Commissioner Albrecht, do you have any more?
Yes, I have a few comments here. I have forty comments. The, they're with me here because I got to read my emails, so the...
Just use your hand, Ray.
Yeah, just this, hold on. Make a comment on the 2615159, which is the county jail, it's agreed this comment. It's a good thing that we're, we're trying to solve our jail issue, and this is the desire to get the improvement authority involved and really get going on that. So the, here's the, here's the major issue I got. Well, I'll leave that for a second here. Also, the 22, which is 15154, the Money Island, that was a result of the Money Island Access Concept Development Project. That was, that was a result of local county and state officials working together to, to look at this roadway that $40 million of oil industry is on the line for this one road because they have a tie, tie for the boat to get to the refrigeration units. If that road is washed out, they have trouble getting there. That, that harvest is lost. And we all got there. They were kind of, the state was shocked. They responded. So it was a great start. Still, the timeframe is a lot, but it's to raise that road bed so we don't have this issue in the future. All right, here's the big issue. Look at the commission to do this. This is 15164. This is the, it's a simple request, the participation of a couple of counties that designated negotiating at the, at the state development, every development plan cross-acceptance process. This is the, is the basis of everything the state, the state does, comes from the state plan. All the HC's focused in on this. All their mandates come from this state plan. And I attended the CCIA meeting they had, and during that, the state official, the state planning official was there. And the matter, the bottom line, I play kind of devil's advocate with it. The bottom line is that they have an image of what Cumberland County is that doesn't necessarily reflect what we believe. And we are going to send a team in there that should, I think should be more broad. They're supposed to go to each township and city to see what their wants are. And I think that, that committee, that, which is what is asking to be represented, should be more, have, bigger than just our administrative officials because I think it needs to reflect a little bit how we feel that where this county should go in the future. The...
Commissioner, as you know, things have been done practice for some time. And unfortunately, I think it's still, that freight train is still moving in that direction. And not necessarily...
I understand.
The commission is not in agreement sometimes with what the authority and or...
This is not our authority?
Or the planning, or the planning development board has, that we see for the county. I'm very agree with you.
That's fine. And this is our part to actually make, do action on that, that we can't send a team in there that I don't know reflects what we would like. I don't want to sit there and go, and I'll, I'll give you an example. Ben Stobart was, was there at the meeting. Nobody was saying anything. I, off of left field, pulled and pulled the state official, tried to get them to see us. This is important, Joe.
All right, continue then. Try and hit the point.
I think I'm trying to make, the whole point is that we should have a broader team than we have to reflect what we do. We're going to pack...
That's what I was looking for.
I said it. But, but you want to understand the reasoning? Maybe I understand the reasoning behind it.
Proceed.
And the idea is that we bring, that we have to go to these townships to make sure their opinions are put into the state plan to make sure that it's not just a footnote. And that's how I was described, a footnote in the state plan is the way they're going to do it. Not incorporate what Cumberland County would like. 2030, actually, probably 30, 40 years ago, was involved with the planning development with the county. The state part, planning process at that time was just beginning. We, the, I comment that the, the planning department was very aggressive, very, they did their homework, they did a lot of things, and they created nodes at that time, that areas that we believe should grow. Sevierville, Leesburg, that the area in that particular should grow, and outside of that is where we could tail it. Well, that's disappearing. That's not even in the plan. The service areas aren't even more for township anymore. If we don't fight or, or we stay on our opinion of this now, it just becomes, that's what it is. Now, the last thing is that we're 21 out of 21, 20 health outcomes now. But if we don't, if we don't want to start, if we don't want to make an issue this, where are we going to go? We can't move, they box us in. So please, I'm urging the commission, don't put this, I want to pull it off the consent agenda or whatever.
You want to pull it off the agenda?
Yeah, to ponder the idea that they're a good team, we have good planners. I'm knocking them. But I think this board should have some, some input into it so when they go to townships.
Okay.
Well, we have a question. Wait, hold on a second. I have a question. This is just authorizing us to be a participant. It's not, it just said nothing about us making...
It's creating a team.
Listen to me. We didn't create a team yet. It's just saying that we are going to. So there's no reason to pull it. What it does is, if we devote for it, that's going to force us to make sure we do it. So my, my statement is, what we do is we have here a work authorizing participation, okay, in the negotiation. There's nothing in it that says about who's going to be there. So if we pass this, that means you don't want commissioners? You'd better get off your asses and do something about it and get the people up. To put this off away, all we're doing is kicking the can down the road.
I want to pull out of the agenda, I want to pull off this, this consent agenda. So we debate this or at least talk about it. So you're right, you're absolutely correct. But I don't want to kick the can down the road. I want to make sure we put our people in place. So I want to off the consent dust for, because it is actually given...
That's fine, we can do that. We can do that.
The planning department, the planning board, it was told that there, we would have representation, we'd be our legislators.
We can, we can do that, Commissioner Albrecht, and then we'll discuss this at the next, at the next meetings if we're done with it all. All right, so let's pull that off and put it into the next.
It's 5164.
Okay. Are you asking? No, that's it. Okay. This one is not here, and I have a couple that I'll, let's save because of constraints with them, that the next, the next meeting, there's going to have to abstain to, but other than that, we can move on.
Director, are we going to have, this is a work session?
Yeah, it will.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure because that was just on the...
That's what I'm saying, we can move on.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, let's...
Public comment.
Yes.
Do I have a motion in second to open public comment on new business only?
So good.
Second, on favor.
All right. Okay, new business. Chuck, you got something you want to say?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is William Beck. I live in Noville, and I presently serve as a Cumberland County Library Commissioner, where I have served since December 2023 and to which this board appointed me in November. On the agenda for the upcoming May 28th meeting is Resolution 15007 titled, "Resolution Accepting Grant Award for the NJSL New Jersey State Library Capital Project Fund, Community Center Digital Connect in the Amount of $3 Million." I am here to voice my support for this resolution's passage. The purpose of this resolution is to secure approval and funding for the construction and establishment of a branch library for the Cumberland County Library. Our target location is on Route 47 on Morris Road, a township. The $3 million in funding for this project, if approved, is a state grant sent by way of the New Jersey State Library and as a portion of the American Rescue Act, signed into law in March 2021 during the COVID-19 pandemic, which was allocated for the purposes of economic stimulus and infrastructure investment. In deciding my support for this resolution, I find this county branch library would increase access to information and information discovery, increase access to technology and internet services for our low-income neighbors, encourage reading, literacy, and lifelong learning, serve as a meeting and social space with a very low barrier to entry, serve as a place for our neighbors to obtain important social services, occupy and utilize a place presently abandoned on Route 47, promote economic mobility by democratizing access to educational resources... abandoned on Route 47, promote economic mobility by democratizing access to educational resources, serve as a place to preserve the local culture, and it would employ people in a low-stress environment, providing people in our communities both an on-ramp to employment in the private sector, an off-ramp before retirement, and an income in which to live. Furthermore, I add that a branch county library would be accessible to everybody in the southeast part of the county without any statutory limitations on what municipality someone in our county calls home. Just as you can imagine, a college degree or a career certification as an investment in oneself, one can consider the implementation of this county branch library as an investment in the community and the future quality of life for our citizens. I think you will find this project agrees with the point and purpose of the American Rescue Plan, is consistent with good governing, and is a moral use of public funds. I ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
William, thank you for your case, sir. We appreciate you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Township. I agree with what the gentleman said about the library. I don't know why you pulled it off of the last agenda, but I'm glad to see it's back on for two weeks from today. I have a question. Are we leasing the cement pad that the jail was going to be built on? Are we leasing that land or are we just paying the bond? I know we're paying.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Technically, the land is owned by the CCIA.
Correct.
Technically, the land is owned by the CCIA, and we would be leasing if the jail had been built. We are paying the money on the bond.
But the lease agreement for the property is no longer in effect.
It's still in effect.
The lease is still in effect.
Yeah.
So we are paying for a cement pad. Well, I asked a question because at the last CCIA meeting, there was a resolution that they're going to investigate the cement, if it's buildable or not, how much deterioration has been. And you've been talking tonight about leasing buildings and we're doing the Wood School. We need space, we're leasing ground with a cement pad, and we're not doing anything on it. Where are you? Questions? This is what, the fifth month of the year? Five months?
pending litigation.
Trouble with any better jail and Sam King?
We'll build it.
Interesting. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, comedian, good evening, audience. My name is John Fuqua. I'm the executive director of Life Worth Living. I'm here tonight with a, I think I got a bruised, I don't know, I feel overwhelmed, to be honest. Right now, as we speak, and one of y'all said it earlier, we rank the lowest ranking in the Too Many Categories. Tonight, I'm standing in front of y'all in this meeting, and I should be on my way to pick John to pick up pizza as we serve our kids down at the Omsen. We do a Team Tuesday here in the city of Burchton from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. It's the only night of recreation that we have, open rec in the city of Burchton, to serve 6,320 students here. Alternative for violence is our Team Tuesday. That's what we get to offer. Standing in front of y'all, some of y'all can see these, we all do outside. This is our Stop the Violence Enough is Enough flyer. We are pranies at Burchton Prim, the owner of that company. It's amazing that we sent $21,000 out for voter registration and my brand company can't get that contract. I wonder, I want to see why that's the case, but that's another story for another day. These flyers are being circulated throughout the county. On these flyers, we got six, 16 different versions of this because over 57, I know 57 people that have been murdered and I'm 47 years old. So that's the work that we do at Life Worth Living. Our goal is to prevent that from happening. In the corner of this flyer is my nephew who lost his life and my cousin on the right-hand corner. This kid at the bottom, Bob Marshawn Townsend, 14-year-old was murdered last year in Millville. I got six of his friends down at our program. Six of them are a part of our program called CCAN, which stands for Cumberland County Identify, Notify, Care. We got a contract with the county prosecutor's office to identify the 50 most at-risk kids in our county, and we work with them. But we have limited resources, we have limited opportunities. Like I said, we got two hours in Burchton. Yesterday, we lost our access to Daniels, Dan and Violet. Victor Jimenez run that program, and we trying to bring these kids out of this, out of the streets because there's not enough opportunities here. I'm standing in front of y'all tonight, I'm going to wrap this up soon. We got, we got awarded a million-dollar earmark from the federal government, Life Worth Living, the prosecutor's office, the Spirit Hospital, United Advocacy Group, and Gateway. We put in an application to use the fairgrounds for the summer camp, which cost the county nothing. We actually got a check already prepared to pay the county $15,000 to host, to host the camp the last two weeks of August. Unfortunately, that, that application was sitting on my desk for the last six weeks. I don't know, we trying to figure it out why, but we made a couple phone calls and we was told it was going to be changed. Until today, we got a phone call, the camp got kicked down the road, the proverbial camp got kicked down the road, and we got a call from the Millville Fire Chief who gave us a long list of things to get done that will possibly never get done with the timeline that we have to get our camp promoted. But that's just another thing that happened here in South Jersey, and I'm wondering why. So I want this body, I want this body and this room to think about the hardships that some people have. When I leave here, I'm going to go to my house, a really dry, I don't live in a rough neighborhood. My kids don't live in a rough neighborhood. I made it, but other kids don't make it. Other kids don't live in good neighborhoods. We have an opportunity to do something that's never been done here before. Me and my staff is on the phone now with Vivica A. Fox, who we got to sign, we want to come to that camp, telling her we still don't got a location. We on the phone with Steve Harvey because we want our kids to see people. We finally got some money to get people here to encourage our kids, but we got to deal with all the red tape. I'm standing in front of y'all as an African-American business owner, as an executive director. I got 53 people that work for me, and they all live in Comberley County. They all get paid this week. They all spend their money here. But for whatever reason, we put our applications in, we get, we get the short end of the state. We just took 21 kids up to the U.S. Senator Debate called, from our program called Beyond the Block. 21 kids have never got involved in civic engagement. They are now, now they are our leaders. They down at the Omsen right now getting job training because we want, we want to supply 30 jobs this summer. We supplied 30 jobs last summer. We out here doing the work. I will wrap up by saying this. This year, Life Worth Living has been granted $2.8 million in grants, in grant funding. 95% of our money go to employee, employees' pay. We are working with $148,000 of that money come from our county. The rest come from the state and the federal government. The only thing we want to do is improve Cumberland County, but it seems like every step that we're right, we got people fighting. I want y'all to support what we doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly, Downtownship, Fortescue. I'm here tonight to support the library extension, and I'd like to give you a little insight into how you got involved in this because I'm not a book reader, so it's going to be an interesting story. But I have been, through the green team that I work with in Downtownship, we've been going into our school, and our school has no librarian. The books that are in the school are at least 10 to 15 years old. So for a library extension, it may be able to help the school system out because they're not going to have a budget for a librarian, but they may have a library extension closer to where they live now, if this goes through. I think that that service that you could do for the outreach areas of this community is important. The school budgets are not going to change. They are not going to have librarians, but maybe they can get to a smaller outreach center with a library. So I ask that you support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The takers? No? Director?
You want to close public at this point?
Well, is, is it a presentation? Is it a presentation?
Promotion to close.
Is this a presentation?
Thank you.
Is this a presentation?
I was just going to make. He's one of yours.
I know, but I'm just saying.
But we have to close the poll.
I know, but I'm, I'm asking, are you making a presentation or are you just speaking for yourself?
Probably a presentation.
Okay. Now, now.
Motion to close. Second. But I'll let you decide now.
All favor.
I just, Chuck Abino again from the Department of Corrections. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that last week was correction officer, actually better put, correction staff week. It's a week set aside. There's other professions that are recognized during the same week. I think nurses week is the same week, but it was correction staff, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge my staff and the efforts that they, shouldn't say my staff, the Department of Corrections staff and the effort that they give and the service that they give to the county. I know they, some of the unions were present and thanked you, the commissioner, for the contract that you gave them, and I wanted to just publicly acknowledge them for the efforts that they give day in and day out. I think they deserve that recognition. Unfortunately, even though they're a part of law enforcement, I think more times than not, they're kind of forgotten because they're out of sight. They don't interact as much with the public, but they do a great service for this county, and I just wanted to acknowledge them publicly before this.
Thank you.
We are have executive session. Resolution 2024-305, resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Senate Byron and Behr Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:412, matters relating to collective bargaining agreements, matters relating to the purchase lease or acquisition of real property or the investment of public funds, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and attorney-client privilege, matters relating to employment relationships. Do I have a motion, a second?
Is that, can we have discussion on all this stuff besides that or not? Because there, yeah, this is a work session, just the agenda? Well, are we going to have any?
So under the open public hearing act, you have a list which you're going to discuss.
I got that. So, so really, there'll be no exchange ideas except what's that says at all? So it should be done here?
If I know about it, it's on your agenda.
Okay. Director, you asked me to put together some of the things that we've been talking about. I don't know, I thought either now or.
Well, I prefer that be come to us on Thursday, like I asked on the email. We had some conversation, I would like to have it so everybody can review it.
Just, just throw the ideas out. We're not working on it tonight, but it needs to be thrown out. That's why I thought we were, you know, so I didn't hear, I didn't see Thursday. It's not exactly, I stand there looking at emails all day, so.
Yeah, it's just set out almost a week and a half. Well.
The executive session.
Ken, it's not anticipated there'll be any action taken.
So, so I can't even throw ideas out at all as, as this is the work session for the board?
No, sir.
All right, I'll remember that. That's real good. So now, Director, so the bottom line is that we've gone through an agenda that is big dictated. We have, there's things we haven't talked about and which I've thrown out, the Wood School, personally thrown out the idea of the Crest, Crest Avenue idea that we should do something, also thrown out the idea of a veterans program, and also economic development thing, but we're not going to hear those ideas at all. Excuse me, I'll talk it to the director, please, right now.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss those and those two items in executive session because it involves the real estate and we're subject to.
Contracts.
Yes.
All right, no problem.
Do I have?
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Commissioner Albert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lab? I'm sorry, Commissioner Saro?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Selayo?
Yes.
This has been a QBC television production in association with our partners and sponsors. QBC broadcasts on Comcast Cable Channel 22 and live streams its programming on Facebook and YouTube. All rights reserved by Quinn Media and QBC, programming that serves the South Jersey market.